The Bryanhead Dive Team, Washington County Dive Team, the Wasatch Dive Team, and the State Dive Team that all came down to help us with that. Had several of our deputies out there. Commissioner Blake was there as a medical examiner. We really received a great amount of community support to be able to go out and look for that young man. Eventually, the State Dive Team got down about midnight and stayed out on the lake all night long, running Sun Rock. And about 4:30 in the morning, we were able to locate his body and the dive team was able to recover him. So, you know, I'm very appreciative to all these folks that came from up north and down south to come help us out. We're very appreciative of that. I think that that just is a testimony of the kind of support that we have in law enforcement in Utah. We're very much appreciative of that. Sure. Is that better? All right. Our Mental Health Unit, we're, we still have our Tier Two deputies that are still responding and doing good work. They've responded to several mental health crises and are still working hard to try to get folks that are struggling with mental health crisis to get the help that they need. Our Metro SWAT team has been extremely busy. So far, we've had eight callouts for the year. Some of those have been some very high-risk situations. We, in just this last week, we had one carjacking suspect out of California that the SWAT team took down. And also a homicide suspect out of Salt Lake City. Back in March, we had a high-risk warrant that had a lot of news notoriety for the threats to the Veterans Administration hospitals and clinics that shut down those, and we were able to make a safe arrest there as well. Our Drug Task Force is very active. We've had a lot of fentanyl cases. Currently, there's a new type of fentanyl that's been hitting the streets. And we're seeing a lot of that that's coming up out of Mexico across the border. One of the things that our task force has informed us is that, right now, they've been very effective in taking a lot of meth off the street. So, the meth isn't as prevalent right now, and they're seeing that the street value is going up on it because it's becoming difficult for them to get. The border still has a huge impact on communities across the nation, including ours. So, we're seeing, you know, a lot of drug activity with precursors coming out of China that are going into Mexico. Like I've already said, we're seeing a new type of fentanyl that's hitting the streets. And, of course, human trafficking is always a concern as well. One of the things that we're, we've been concerned about, at least down in Arizona, they're seeing that the drug cartels are recruiting juveniles to run drugs and human trafficking for them. And they'll pay them $1,000 and tell them, "Drive as fast as you can and don't stop for anything." And so, they're having some, you know, a lot of pursuits and different things like that. And we haven't seen that up here yet, but, you know, a lot of times, the things that we see down on the border end up coming up here as well. One of the things that we're working on currently and something that the Commission needs to be aware of is Senate Bill 179, which is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. It requires counties to have a council put together by January 1st of 2023. So, that's one of the things that we need to be talking about here in the future. We've talked about it in our law enforcement task force meeting and maybe looked at the possibility of maybe doing a combined committee that would include Beaver and Garfield Counties if they wanted to participate, which is allowed by the Senate bill. Just as current law enforcement issues, as far as total incidents reported since January 1st, we've had four aggravated assaults, four air supports with a helicopter. We've had 122 agency assists, which is up from 40 in March. Nine burglaries, 11 child abuse or neglect reports, 72 felony offenses, 27 fires, nine K-9 callouts, four Mental Health Unit callouts. Misdemeanor offenses is 413, other offenses is 516. One of the things that I think is important is sex crimes against children is 11. We just did a sting with the Attorney General's Office through ICAC. ICAC is Internet Crimes Against Children. And they did a statewide sting. We hosted one of those here in Iron County and worked with Cedar PD and ENEC PD. In the course of that, we made two arrests and have three active investigations currently that were here in Iron County. 11 other sex crimes, 18 welfare checks, 109 drug cases, 11 DUIs, and 119 animal problems. With our current strength of patrol, we're still down three deputies and one part-time bailiff deputy after the following hires. We've made conditional offers to two with an academy start date of July. And one that'll, it's coming over to us with corrections. We're testing again June 18th with seven possible people to test. We currently have two new deputies in the FTO program today. Sam Ward will be finishing up this month, and Dean, Monday long, will be finished in July. We've got three that are preparing to attend post, Brandon Rowley, Kevin Barrett, and Scott Smith. So, hopefully, they'll all be in post in July.
Sheriff, how long does post last?
Seventeen weeks for the law enforcement portion. It's eight weeks for the corrections. And then, and then we have about 16 weeks of FTO after that. So, it's a pretty lengthy process for us. In personnel, over the last 18 months, I've signed off on 12 new or extensions to current subdivisions and two additional ones so far this year. Most average, 82 to 86 new single-family homes. One is for 250 new single-family homes. This is a significant increase of new move-ins into the unincorporated part of the county. We've increased calls for service and volume increase. And in order to keep pace with the rapid growth of Iron County, we're going to need to look at increasing our deputies, probably four to six deputies. As you're already aware, pay-wise, we're well behind other agencies within Iron County, and hopefully, that will be corrected today. Vehicles, we're having a hard time with vehicles with the supply chain. We've had 18 vehicles that have been ordered for two years, and Ford has just canceled our order on all 18 vehicles. So, Wade's been working hard on getting us vehicles through Chevrolet, but we really are unsure of what's going to happen in the future as far as vehicles go. Jail is kind of on standby right now. Our budget is sound. Patrol budget in end of April was at 35.41%. The jail budget was at 31.65%, and search and rescue was at 33.34%. And are there any questions for me at all? All right, thank you.
Good.
Thank you for all of your, thank you for your response, you know, all the deputies and everybody that was on that call the other night. It was, I mean, really awesome. It's just the, there's a lot of folks that didn't have to be there, but stayed for moral support and just to see it through. It was, it was, it's pretty honorable, pretty cool.
I just have a quick question for the sheriff. My name is Volney Moran. Sheriff, with what happened in Uvalde, Texas a little while ago, it became very clear that gun-free zones don't work. And I wondered if there were any county properties that were designated as gun-free zones, not counting the schools, but I mean, under the jurisdiction of Iron County.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I will just say, Darren Adams and I have been meeting with the Iron County School District over the last couple of weeks. You know, we've been working with the school district for over 15 years in active shooter response and helping to prepare our schools. There's still a lot of things that the school district can do itself in order to be better prepared. And they've made up a list that they're going to be taking to the Iron County School District for approval. So, you know, there's, this is something that's, you know, very serious, that we've taken serious for a long time. I mean, we, here in Iron County, we started active shooter training with our officers when ourselves in West Valley City were the only ones in the entire state that were doing it. We've been doing it for a long, long time, and we take it very seriously.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Shalom.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. All right, so, like the sheriff said, our budget as of the end of April was about 32%. We have seen a very large, of course, increase in expense in our culinary. We've been trying, our culinary supervisor has, she's been trying to buy in bulk and freeze stuff that she finds on a good deal. What's happening, though, is she'll order stuff, and they'll say it's coming, and then it just doesn't show up. So, then that is challenging because then they're trying to substitute and try to make their menu work. So, our cost per tray has gone up quite a bit, especially since last year. So, that has been a very big expense for us. Our workload is getting a lot greater. The court, thankfully, is starting to ramp back up. So, we're actually seeing some movement of some of our long-term inmates that have been with us for a long time that are going through the process. So, our, and we've opened back up, so that our partnering agencies can bring all their inmates or their arrestees in. So, our bookings have gone up significantly since the first quarter, about 50 more. Our daily population, we stay right around that 180, 180 mark, which you guys know is our, that's really almost, that's our capacity. That's right, that's right where we're at for the safety and security of our staff and inmates. We currently are housing nine state inmates. We have 38 federal. We've asked the federal, the US Marshals to try to keep our numbers down. They do the best that they can, but they are really struggling with being able to house their inmates places as well. Our transportation has gone up. We still are seeing tons of video, video court, and that's not just from our local, our local courts. It's courts all over the state that we're trying to juggle. We have two video rooms that just are going all day long. Our work crew has been awesome. We don't have a lot of, because of the, what it takes to go out with the work crew, our standards are so high that he's having a really hard time finding the inmates that are sentenced and don't have violent offenses and don't have protective orders and stuff. So, Deputy Burr has just been rocking it with what he, what he can pull out there. He's been working on the roads and fencing and cleanup on Newcastle, 4,000 North, Bumblebee, and Jackson Wash. Also, still up there at Five Mile. Our workload, we have, we have one vacancy in our, in our medical department. We had one that left and went to bailiff. And so, we do have a gal, when she gets back from her annual training with the 222, then hopefully, we'll be able to pick her up and get that position filled. We're anticipating a few leaving at the end of the month for us. Maybe, maybe we'll be able to save them. So, that is something that's been really challenging for us. We have one in post. Another really challenging thing that we've had is we have a lot of, well, I shouldn't say a lot. We have four FMLA, four of our staff that are on FMLA, which has been challenging, and one active full-time military. We still haven't found a Mason for our J-block door and medical department renovation. So, we're still looking for a Mason. If you know one, send, if you know one that's willing to do that, those small jobs for us, then send them our way. Yeah, other activities, we had three graduate from post, so they're in the, currently in our FTO program. We've had quite a few community, organized community tours come through. We've had a lot of interested community members, youth groups that have come through, come through the jail. And we've had a lot of jail, jail meetings in the last little bit. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Shalom. We appreciate you.
Hey, John, I just started getting texts that YouTube went away.
Uh-oh.
So, a little update there. Jared and Justin have been kind of letting me know. They've isolated the problem. There was a piece of hardware that got fried with our last power bump, and it's been intermittent. So, at times, we've had audio.
Well, that's why I've gotten texts, "Hey, I have audio now." And then I get texts, "Hey, everything's gone."
Yes. That's what Jared was just telling me. It's like, and so, they're, they're going to keep trying to limp it along through this meeting, and then we're going to meet with pole audio tomorrow, so, sorry.
Just passing it on.
Public defender.
For future reference, there will be, on the public notice website, the audio, the complete audio will be there. And Justin will splice together the audio on top of the video and repost it on YouTube. The problem is, you can't see it live the way we'd like, so.
Morning.
Morning.
So, as you heard from the sheriff in corrections, things are busy but moving. As far as public defense go, we're making a, I think, good headway on the COVID backlog, and so, things are moving forward. Having corrections here, just to let you know, we work with the jail a lot on visitation of inmates, and they've been very accommodating. We have to be in the jail much more now that we can't visit with clients in court. We have to be in the jail more, and the jail's really worked hard to accommodate us to be able to visit and meet with our clients so we can keep things moving forward. And so, that's been a huge relationship through COVID that we've worked, and it's worked really well.
I will tell you.
Another thing, we are going to start returning back to in-person court as far as juvenile court goes. In July, they're going to start returning back to in-person court hearings. District Court, we still need to have some meetings. No date yet as far as when in-person hearings will resume again, so we're still doing everything via WebEx. We have found my replacement. Candace Reed is here with me today. She's covering court hearings. Just because we switched to Tuesday, we had some hearings today that we hadn't moved, and so, she's, oh, Candace is here. So, she will be the person replacing me and giving the quarterly reports. We also have two requests for proposals out to seek to fill two district court positions, hopefully, July 1st, to help continue moving the caseloads and backlogs forward. But overall, things are definitely moving forward and going well. Any questions for me as far as public defense is concerned?
No, we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck on your future endeavors.
Yes. Okay, we'll go to commission reports, and we'll make them quick.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna defer in the respective time.
You have something, Paul?
I wanted to give a shout-out to Commissioner Wood on an issue. We've been working a lot on the fairgrounds. Commissioner Wood has taken initiative to work on some ranch-type entrances in a fence. She's contacted Frank Nichols, who has been very generous in donating a lot of steel materials. He's got about, what is it, about 80, 80 of these really old wheel lines, the old antique, heavy steel. They're rusty, they look really awesome. He's donating all that material for the construction of a really nice-looking fence. And I think this is an example of how the county is frugal. Of course, Marilyn was elected as a commissioner, but her husband's appointed to build the fence. So, he's, he's volunteering whether he likes it or not, right?
Exactly. You know how you do those things for your spouse?
It's just, it's been, it's been awesome to see her pursue that. And we're going to have a really nice-looking professional entrance that's, I think, going to be, we can all be proud of. And she's going to be, play a big part in that, so, thank you. The other, one other quick thing, we're just wrapping up the bleacher stands, and bleachers were done. I'm glad we did the bleachers when we did. The materials have almost doubled since we bought that material, the aluminum, and so, we were very fortunate on that. Carter's gave me some bad news, that we've still got to pour the six-foot apron in the walls. They said they couldn't get cement, so I went over to Sun Rock this last week and pleaded with them that they work with us as a county, so we can have that ready for the fair in August. And they, they said they would, so they've, they've agreed to provide us about 80 yards. So, and Carter's, I believe, is probably, they're probably pouring those walls maybe today even, so, that's all I have.
They had the footings, yeah. I think I'll defer to, and since we don't have a lot of time, let's, let's take about a five-minute break. Let's come back at a quarter after, and we'll go ahead and go forward with the meeting. So, thank you, everyone.
Hold on, let me switch my brain on. I'm doing a really good job. All right, that's going to be. We're going to be responsive to the issue. Really hard to make sure that our public safety is updated with our development. Right, folks here in Iron County. Keep the culture, like it is. All right, that's going to be. Not if we grow. 12E. I was born there. What's that? Yes. That's right. I do, I do have a website. I'm working on more content, which is MikeBlake.com. As much information out there as possible. Thank you.
Okay, see you in a minute, okay? What is 12E?
That you're going to do first.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. 12, 12E. We ready? Okay, we're going to get started again on our regular 10 o'clock meeting Monday, Tuesday, the 14th day of June 2022. And we'll get going with that. And we're going to go out of order a little bit because we've got all of our great correctional people here that that we, we want to go ahead and, and our law enforcement. Can we have Jen come up? We want to go to 12E on your agenda. And I'm going to have her talk, tell us all about this new stepping grade that we're wanting to do for our employees.
Thank you, and I appreciate you pulling me out of order for our wonderful employees here. You betcha. So if you don't mind, I'll cover items A through D first for your consideration for possible motion and then move on to E for the remainder of my time. And I need to first start out with an apology like I always do. Some of the dates I submitted on the agenda are incorrect. So the ones that I will be saying today are the correct ones. So first, in the Sheriff's Office Patrol, Scott Smith and Skylar Barrett were selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time Deputy One positions effective July 1st, 2022. Brandon Rowley has been selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to laterally transfer from Sheriff's Corrections Deputy One to backfill the vacant Sheriff's Patrol Deputy One, effective date, June 26, 2022. Beau Johnson has completed all requirements to receive a promotion, moving him from a full-time Deputy One to a full-time Deputy Two effective June 12, 2022. In the Sheriff's Office Corrections, Clayton Mitchell has successfully completed his EMT and AEMT certifications and is now eligible for promotion, moving him from a full-time Deputy One to a full-time Medical Technician Deputy One, effective date, June 12, 2022.
Was that Deputy One?
Full-time Medical Technician Deputy One is what he's going to be moving to. He was originally kind of in a pending status until now.
Okay.
Brian Turk is on the calendar for housekeeping matters only. As he was approved for an interim Deputy Two status in March of 2022, he has now successfully completed all of his requirements and is eligible for the full Deputy Two status. And he's already received his promotional increase. So that was just for gee whiz, I guess. In landfill, Rex Brown has been selected from the most recent competitive recruiting interview process to backfill the vacant full-time landfill technician position effective June 13, 2022. In the Fleet Department, Cade Beaumont was selected from an internal recruitment to transfer from a roads technician to a fleet assistant mechanic, effective date, July 10, 2022.
Okay, I would move for approval of personnel requests as described by Jennifer.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is for a possible approval for the re-establishment of a stepping grade system. I think it's important to first give a brief history and perspective on where past pay structures have got us to this point in order to plan for the future for Iron County employees. Iron County was on a stepping grade system a few decades ago until the recession of the mid 2000s. At that time, it was decided by prior commissioners to cease the program and no compensation structure fully was replaced after that program or after the program thereafter. Knowing how difficult it would be to re-establish a consistent pay plan, it was deliberately decided to start slowly with this process at the beginning of last year. You graciously elected to raise the starting rate of our lowest paid employees to 1550 per hour, as well as adjust these employees to where we estimated they should fall within the existing minimum maximum pay scales. In June of last year, a catch-up COLA was implemented for all employees ranging from between 5 to 10%. And knowing that a system needed to be implemented, we began working on the re-establishment in the stepping grade system using the current minimum maximum starting rates with the exception of the most difficult to fill department, the Sheriff's Office. We have not been able to recruit and/or retain employees. Therefore, it was imperative to raise the starting weight, rate of our certified staff to match that of Cedar City's Police Department's starting weight, rate which they will intend to implement on July 1st, 2022. And let's see if I can figure this out. There we go. Some factors to be considered for possible implementation of this stepping grade system. Each employee has been assigned a grade based on their current job description and current assigned pay scale. Within that grade, every employee has been given a step based on their years of Iron County service. And that is really small, so you won't be able to see it. Sorry. New employees may receive year-for-year credit up to 10 years for prior job-specific verifiable service. Current employees have been given credit for prior job-specific verifiable service and have been adjusted accordingly. Hey, that's good. Thank you for that. Certified law enforcement employees have been assigned grades above current rate for retention and recruitment. Where am I? I'm just going to do all of this. How's that? There we go. This implementation and salary adjustment is being initiated early as it was intended for the 2023 year. Upon approval, newest salaries will take effect June 26, 2022. The next step adjustment is intended to take effect on the first pay period of 2024. All just job description placements have been approved at this time, including some ones that have been pending kind of out in the ether, and they shall remain in effect until the end of 2023. Any new proposals for job description creations and/or requests for change, change in their pay for job descriptions will be discussed at the end of 2023, with implementation at the beginning of the 2024 year upon approval. Employees shall now no longer receive 5% increases for new certifications. They shall remain in their appropriate stepping grade as assigned unless they are eligible for promotion into a new job description. Employees on active disciplinary probation shall not receive a raise until they have successfully completed and moved into a non-provationary status. Stepping grade is intended to work in conjunction with a consistent cost of living increase. A COLA changes the stepping grade chart, which is intended to correspond with the Consumer Price Index year after year if initiated. Let's go to the next one. So the personnel policies and procedures manual changes to reflect this new change will be section two, three, and five. They've been updated to incorporate the stepping grade verbiage as well as other corresponding information that's relevant to this change. Each of the two structures have 30 grades. That's a lot to process.
And it's a little bit stressful.
Memorize those numbers. Each of the two structures have 30 grades. There is a 5% increase between each grade. Non-certified employees' pay structure, we'll go to the next one, it's a little bit smaller, has 23 steps with a 1.9% difference between each step. The cost implementation for the remainder of the 2022 year is approximately 1.10 million dollars or 2.219 million for the entire year. Any questions? I would be happy to entertain.
We really appreciate Jennifer and Dan's worked alongside her. She has put so much work and time into this, I can't even tell you. And we appreciate her so much. We, I just, I just really want her to know how much we appreciate her.
Thank you.
She's been awesome.
This has been a process, you know, when we initially, when I came on the commission, worked with our previous human resources director, Adrian. This was a big, this was a really big priority to try and fix the, the lack of a wage structure. Were able to put something in place, but it was super difficult and almost impossible to implement. When Jen got here, said we've got to make this simple. When we've got to make it something that, that gives our employees the, the vision of where they are in their career. It also, I think the most, one of the most important things that I've argued for is we've got to de-politicize our wages. We've got to, you know, the conversation every year in budget hearings. You know, when, when I first got on the commission, it was literally almost like throwing a dart at something to try and determine, you know, who got what and if somebody got something. And I think that's just completely inappropriate. I, I really am confident that this will give us a roadmap for compensation where it's not a political discussion every year in budget hearings, but also to be able to allow the employees to have a path, a career path to, to lean their hat on. You know, as a employee of Cedar City Corporation, I was there when we had a stepping grade. And I was there, they did basically the same thing, the city and the county dynamited everything. And then it just becomes a political conundrum. I'm going to not use profanity in our public meeting.
I've done really good too. I'm very proud of myself.
But I, I am, I am, I am, I am so proud of Jennifer and the work that she's done. Because, I mean, this has been a, this has been all, not a daily conversation, but, but.
A lot of.
We, we've worked very closely for a long time to make sure that we do this right. And I am super proud of Jennifer and the effort and the work. I also want to, want to say by the things that she's done, she's literally saved the county tens of thousands of dollars in, by her doing the analytics. But also not, not necessarily just that, but her working with other entities around the state and such a, there's been such a.
Collaboration.
Yeah, collaboration's a great word. Building relationships with all those other agencies and entities around the state who have been willing to share that information, which in turn has saved us a ton of money. But it's also given us a very honest picture of wage and finances from around, not only the state of Utah, but surrounding areas in the country. I, I tell people all the time, I'm going to make you employee of the month. And we don't really, we don't really have an employee of the month program.
Make my own plaque.
But Jan, we need to make an employee of the month program and I nominate you for like the next two.
She's the one that makes the plaque. So make yourself a plaque.
Make yourself a certificate and get yourself something real nice.
You got it.
But truly, I am really thankful for you and your efforts and.
I appreciate your consideration for this.
Input from everybody across the county, our department heads and everybody else. This has truly been a collaborative effort. And thank you. You're.
Thank you.
You're the one that's borne the brunt.
I'll pay the bribe later. I'm just kidding. Total joke.
I, I too would like to thank you and Dan for all your work. It's been amazing what you've done. And just did what both the other commissioners have said. I couldn't have said it better. So thank you.
And the other thing that needs to be said, that the reason why we did this was because of our great employees.
Yes.
I'd like to say just a little.
Yep.
So there's two things. One, I think it's important to, for, for employees to know as far as managing expectations, this is not about an individual raise for an individual employee. This is about backing into a system that we can move forward with. And some people will get larger raises, but that's because they've been further behind. They've had, they've had the opportunity cost of not having those raises those many years. I think it was 2008 when that system went away.
Sounds right.
And the other thing I just want to say is, I, I think it's important to note, this is probably the single hardest decision these commissioners will have to make, including the jail. This is, this is using up pretty much all of the disposable like cash in the budget. And, and I think it reflects the commitment that commissioners have to the employees and to retention. And, and I think it reflects really well on the work that you've done.
Thank you.
So we need to approve that, right?
Is there, is there any other comment regarding this agenda item? I don't know who's here for what or if we have any other question or comment from anybody regarding the, this particular agenda item?
Just very briefly, this has been something that's been very important to me since I came into office. You know, I, I looked at my deputies and I found where so many of them, their wages were so compressed that I had corporals that were making less money than, than, you know, the deputies under them. And different things like that, that, you know, it was very evident to me that, that there was just, just a huge problem within the sheriff's office. And over the time, you know, we've, we've seen with everything that's been going on around the state and within Iron County itself, we've seen that, that it's, law enforcement has become very, very competitive. And we just kept falling further and further behind, even though the commission has, has done some remarkable things in the, in the past year to, to try to help address that. I just want you to know how much I appreciate it because I, I believe that this is, is something that shows the deputies that, that you care about them and that you care about the service that they provide to our community. And, you know, really, really helps us to become much more competitive with the surrounding agencies. And, and hopefully will, will help us keep our deputies here. You know, we've lost 22 deputies in the last 10 months. And so that's, that's been a huge thing. And we're, we're very appreciative of, of this effort that's been made by all. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, one thing that was really important to us as a commission, the sheriff's office is, is obviously the squeaky wheel because it has to be. But, but it was all, it was really important for us to implement this for all of our employees, for, for everybody who works for the county and to make it fair and equitable for everybody, not just the sheriff's office. And I'm a fan of the sheriff's office being, you know, a cop myself. I get it. But I, but you know, we really worked hard to make this equitable across the board for everybody that works in our, that works for Iron County with us. And I mean, just really, really humbled by the process. This has been so long in coming. And thank you, Jan. Seriously, I mean, I don't really thank people that much, but thank you.
Hi, Jenny Hendricks. I just want to applaud the process too. This has been a long time coming. This has been a public safety issue for many, many years. And so just as a citizen of Iron County, I'm just thrilled that our, our local people, our local law enforcement are going to be able to be retained and recruited. So thank you. Anyone else?
Cheryl Wicker, I just wanted to clarify something. So for the, the employees who haven't been here as long, how does it work in conjunction with the cost of living raises? Yes.
That's not a problem. And I can pull forward a little bit if you'd like me to do that. So, so we can just use an example of, and it stretched out a little bit. So, so ideally you're going to have, let's just say, for example, a grade eight, someone being hired on. Their very first starting date, they would be a grade eight, step one, which would be 218241. Yeah, thank you for that. And in conjunction with the cost of living every year, that will be considered and hopefully implemented. My suggestion is just to kind of follow the social security's cost of living index because they are very consistent and fair. Not to go crazy, but just to kind of follow their actuaries that do the work. And then if a cost of living is afforded to our employees, then that would raise the step one, increase that percentage point. And that would be the new starting wage. Does that, did I explain that correctly? Okay. Any other questions on that?
In other words, it bumps the whole scale?
It bumps the whole scale of that percentage point. So it starts with step one, which is kind of great with this chart. So I don't have to do as much of the work. Step one is aggregate for all of it. Is that the correct term, Dan? I hope, if he's here. So you've fixed the step one to whatever that percentage point is for COLA and it will adjust all of it accordingly.
Any more questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Jack's?
Yeah, Jack Jensen-John. Can you clarify what you said about this eating up all of the additional budget?
Like, I can't speak for Dan, but I know that this is, Dan's right there. Dan could actually speak to it, but it's, it's using up most of the spare cash flow. Dan is going to be more qualified to speak to it than me. Sorry, Dan.
Or just this year into the future? Yeah, it's kind of awkward being.
Could you repeat your question? I just came walking up to hear the very last few words.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but then I.
Well, I said, I said it uses up much of the cash flow.
You know, it's a hard decision for them because it's eating up all of the spare funds. I wasn't sure what exactly.
I'm glad, Dan.
So we've been in a surplus situation, you know, as the, as the CFO for the county, it's, it, you know, I like to talk about how, how well-funded the county is, how, how. it's, it, you know, I, I like to talk about how, how well-funded the county is, how, how responsible it is. And at the same time, I say, okay, we, we're good. We have good fund balances. And then there's always, well, then why aren't we doing something here? Or we aren't, why aren't we doing something there? So, let me just clarify. We've been, um, first of all, the county is subdivided into many different funds. The general fund is the one that everybody's most familiar with. Our employees don't all, um, their salaries and wages don't all come out of the general fund. We have Fund eleven municipal services, Fund eighteen, Fund twenty, Fund twenty-four, Fund twenty-two, Fund twenty-eight. Um, no, Fund twenty-eight doesn't have any. We have our, our enterprise funds.
We're gonna call you out if you get those numbers wrong.
Fifty-seven, fifty-nine, that all have employees in them. They have, they all have their own sources of revenue and so forth. So when we talk about doing something like this, it's gonna impact every fund differently. Some funds are a little tighter and so forth. Um, generally speaking, we have, um, we've had some surplus. And when I say surplus, um, surplus deficit, all these words get thrown around. Here's what I mean by that. We have had, um, consistently at the end of the year in some of these funds, excess fund balance left over. I mean, not just the fund balance that's there to start with, but we've had more revenues than expenses in our monthly budget, in our annual budgets in some of these funds. Um, what we have been doing with that surplus leading up to this point, I have been setting money aside towards, um, accruing it for the capital projects specifically for the jail. Um, we've set aside millions of dollars, um, you know, like for example, Washington County, they just built their new administration building. I can't remember how many million, fifty million or something, and they built it completely with money that they had saved. Um, we're nowhere near that. Um, we won't be able to build a jail with saved funds, but I have been setting aside money. When you do a big project like that, you do wanna have some of your own, um, skin in the game and have some money. So we do like to accrue money for that. That's what I have been doing with surplus. Um, as, as this was, I looked at all the different funds. I looked at the presentation that Jen had. And, um, in its first round, I mean, we've gone through multiple rounds of this to figure out what we could afford, that we wouldn't just completely tap the county out as far as, um, expenses. But we are using up the majority of that surplus that we've been setting aside for the jail. We no longer will be able to set aside million to million and a half dollars a year towards the jail. This will, this will basically chew up that. So, well, basically our revenues and our expenses are gonna be more on par with each other, um, after doing this. Um, we have a pretty good set aside fund balance, um, that is in that capital project fund for the jail, but we will have to do a probably a bond election. That's, that's part of this discussion. We were hoping to be able to cash flow the jail instead of doing a bond election, um, with this. It most certainly will mean that we'll have to do a bond election when we do the jail. So, I hope that answers your question.
Wonderful. Can't take time for just a comment then? Um, so I used to dispatch actually here for the sheriff's office. None of these guys. That was a long time ago. I worked at the state prison, uh, doing corrections. I have nothing but respect for especially the sheriff's office and everything they do. I've never been in a government position, uh, position that didn't have one of these. So I didn't know before coming to this meeting that this was not in place. So I echo everything uh, Mike said about this being necessary and needs to get in place. On the other side, um, if this is being done so that all of your employees are not feeling the effects of the rising gas prices and everything else, what you're doing is creating a caste system where, where everyone else in the community suffers. We're going to make sure that the government employees don't. And they are shielded from it by the taxpayers.
I'm not sure that that's
And I don't, I don't know that's the case. I didn't hear that echoed.
It's actually a great clarification.
But if we're saying those, those pri- those wages need to go up so that they don't feel the same effects as everyone else, that's in essence what we're doing and that would be, I don't trust that that's anything that you guys or any of our, uh, fine employees would want that principle. I just wanna make sure that if we're putting this in place, it's just because it's lacking, not because oh, we need to make sure that our people are above and beyond and not feeling the same effects everyone else has.
And I think Jen has a ready answer for you.
I, I have a great answer for that. I hope, I hope I can. So, so the starting of this process was me wanting to kind of take a hold of the, the moon stars and everything in between by trying to incorporate what our industry standard is. I quickly realized that was not even close to being attainable. Um, so we kind of scrapped that model and ideal and went to what can we do? And what we ended up coming to this consensus was, is we are staying with what our minimum starting wage is as of how many years ago? Gosh, years and years ago. We are not increasing that industry standard other than when we did the fifteen-fifty starting point. So that compression model that we were speaking of was, we started all of the lowest paid employees to that fifteen-fifty mark. And everyone else compressed and kind of got their starting wages lowered where it wasn't consistent. So the only thing that we have done was stretch that out. We have not increased anything to be comparable with what our market industry standards are. So we are still par for the course below.
So to Jax's point
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you clarify how you backed into it? Cause you were, initially you were, you were looking at, you know, trying to figure out maybe even, you know, salary adjustments based on, uh, you know, the research you had done.
Yeah.
But really, you went back to just the current pay scales and backing it. Would you maybe clarify that? I think
I think you said it perfectly, yeah. Um, the start, I've been gathering data from my counterparts across the state, local state, um, for the past probably year or so. We have a great relationship and we formed great relationships where we email each other ideas, um, salaries starting for other, for our entities just to kind of compare. So we all know where each other are. Um, so I kind of knew going into this that, that we were every time I would answer an email, we were always one of the lowest, um, as far as starting salaries goes for any of our employees. So that is one that we ended up knowing that we couldn't, this is kind of just a baby step in the process in hopes that eventually, years down the road, we can, we can adjust to become comparable to those.
We, as commissioners, felt like that we had to be responsible.
Correct. And I appreciate that.
And, and that's where it all came about with Dan's help, looking at the budget and, and you know, we just couldn't blow up everything.
I agree. And that's why I didn't wanna ask for it.
Did not wanna do a tax increase.
I agree.
So.
So I think this was a really great, trying to check as much of the boxes of needs for the county as we possibly could without um, being irresponsible with taxpayer, taxpayer dollars. It's, it was really important to us to make sure that that was on the forefront of our minds.
So to clarify, there was no inflationary component? There was no, uh?
Other than what I spoke about for the sheriff's office. Yes.
But that's competitive for recruiting.
Correct.
Yes.
You basically backed into it, which is to say, if I am a grade four and I've been here for twelve years, I should be at that wage.
Correct.
And those are the reasons for those employees that are compressed, for those corporals that are on par with the deputies under them.
Correct.
Um, that is why this is so expensive is because those people are far behind. But it's not about trying to keep them with, with inflation. It's not about trying to have astronomical raises. It's trying to put them on the career path where they should be. And it's important to note too, that the opportunity cost for those individual employees has been a heavy burden for a long time, since, well, two thousand and eight. Um, I, I've been here that long and I, I mean, I'm not in law enforcement, but I, I've, I've lived it. Uh, and so there's something to be said for that. And, and it's, it's not an inflationary thing. It's just trying to back into the scale that we already have.
No, I appreciate you said it more eloquently than I could have. So I appreciate that.
Please come up.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Michelle Tollis, um, just wanting to know if you could give some clarification on why this has taken so long to get put in place. Um, the money that we've invested into taking, for instance, the sheriff's department, uh, into the sheriffs and the deputies. You know, it's a lot of lost money that we as taxpayers has put into employees in the county and they've gone elsewhere. So I would just like some clarification on why this is taking so long to implement.
I can talk about that a little bit. We, last year, we did a, we're living in unprecedented times with inflation. And, uh, until we get an administration in, in the United States that realizes that we need to open up, uh, the markets, you know, the oil drilling and these things and, and, and supply side economics, um, we're all gonna suffer. But, um, last year, we did a, a historic mid-year budget, um, adjustment. Um, and we gave the law enforcement ten percent. And back there, our, law enforcement was ten, I think attorneys was ten. And then everybody else in the county was five. That had never happened before in the history of Iron County, a mid-year budget adjustment. And that big of a raise had also never happened in the history of Iron County. So, so a year ago, we were on par with what we needed to do. And, uh, typically, we would wait till the end of the year to, to do budget talks and do these things. But we are again doing this mid-year. Am I accurate, Dan? Dan, am I accurate saying that? So here we are again, doing it mid-year and it's taken
Dan, could you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
So
In fact, I think that I try to stress him out every year, cause this is the second year I've done this to him. So I apologize in advance.
And it's taken a long time. It's taken months to put this all together. It's very complicated.
It is.
And it's a, it's a really tricky balancing act. In, in the private world, my son, for instance, in the cabinet business, when materials and labor goes up, he just simply raises his prices.
Right.
When whole builders, materials and labor go up, they raise their prices. In government, you have to raise taxes. And we as commissioners decided we were not gonna raise taxes. And so it's a very difficult balancing act to, to make all this work. And I think we've done that. And I think with the help of Dan and Jennifer and others, we've balanced this without raising taxes and, and made this work. And I think it's been, and it's, I think it's gonna be equitable for for all involved.
We, we all gotta remember too, that, that, that the new sheriff's, uh, um, office and correctional facility that we have and that we need to put forward, that we have to put forward is another huge thing that's on our plate. And that's one of the reasons why at, at the, we didn't increase at, uh, the budget, um, time, uh, at the end of the year last year. And we just, it, it's a big burden on our, I mean, I feel like I have these big weights on my shoulder and but, but when we started losing our, our department people, we just had to do something. And we understood that because of this, the way that this economy is. And, and so we're gonna have to go about the, the jail a little differently. But, but we're still, we're still, we've still got to do that or, or we're gonna be in trouble. So we still have to do that, but but we had to take care of our people first. And, and that's the reason why, as Jen worked through this, she's been working on this a long time. It's not like this is just something that we, out of the blue, decided, well, it's campaign season, we've gotta do this. We have been doing this for a long time. And, and so, but this is, I'm glad that we're able to get it done right now because that, you know, ended up that it was midterm, but but that's okay because we needed to have it done.
It was a necess- yeah, necessary stuff.
Anything else?
Dan's gotta comment.
Dan's got something.
Sometimes I think in government, we just stand around and pat each other on the back. But I do wanna express my thanks to the commission. Um, people say that Jen has a hard job. She probably has the hardest job in the county. She has to listen to all the pressure. I, I run numbers. I, I do math. I do all that stuff. I like the clarity of it. I like its ones and zeros. Um, but the, the real hard, hard job are the three people up here that have to actually make a decision. Cause they're gonna get attacked from any decision they make from both sides and in the middle. And it's very difficult. I, you know, I work with all the department heads. We have all of our budget hearings one-on-one. And, and some are really good to see the, the big picture. Some are a little bit more myopic and it's like, I have needs. And they do. And we have great department heads at Iron County. And they do have needs. Um, some of those needs are critical needs. Some of those needs are, I can't do my job without these. And some of them are like, if you don't, if I don't do it this year, I gotta do it next year and it's gonna cost a little bit more next year. But, but the commission has to take all of that input. They have to answer to their constituents. They have to answer to the public that has questions that may not understand the full detail and the full impact. We have at least three in the room right now that are running for office. I think you guys are nuts to run for commission. But I do also say thank you because it is
And I'd like to point out that you have run for office?
Yes.
You are running for office.
But, but commission, um, city council and county commissioner gotta be the hardest jobs in politics. Cause you, cause you are, you're governing the local people. So I just wanted to say thank you. This is, these are difficult decisions and, and you guys put a lot of time and effort that I don't know if the public really knows how much time and effort. So anyways, pat you guys on the back.
I'd like to echo that.
Thanks. Dan, we need to tell thank you too. We have, but again, because, because without his expertise in the budget area, we wouldn't
I agree.
Know how to do that. So it's been really good, helpful. Okay, should we get a motion?
I will move to approve the step in grade implementation, which is a county-wide salary adjustment with applicable policy modifications to incorporate step in grade verbiage as Jennifer's outlined.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, uh, we'll go to public comments. Um, three-minute limit for our public comments. Um, must not repeat others' comments, only for items not on the agenda. Um, no items related to commissioners' role, uh, as an appeals board. And, uh, comments should be directed to the commission. No attacks on people's, uh, character. Thanks, correction people. They're all going. Any public comment? No? No taker. Oh, we got one. Yep. State your name again.
Cheryl Wicker. Thank you. I, I do appreciate everything you do. And I've met with each of you at some point, um, this year. And I'm so grateful. And I see good that you're doing. I just want you to know that. Um, one thing that when you have a big mouth, um, people reach out to you. And I don't know how I became that for some people um, in the county because I'm literally nothing but a mom of six kids. And, um, that's all I really wanna be and, and a wife. And, um, I, I'd like to go back to not being anybody, but just to those kids. But I've had, um, I've had quite a few people reach out to me. And I've said, I have, I have nothing. And they, they said, well, you're bold enough that you're speaking. And, um, there's people in the county, um, who've reached out that they are a little afraid if they speak up that they will be, um, there will be some retribution. I don't know this. I, I don't know how the county works. I don't, I don't necessarily see that. But they have, um, reached out to me. So one thing that, um, I've wondered how other counties do it. And I've, I've researched a little, but I'm not finding anything. Is there an independent board or an independent group that employees of Iron County could go to, um, to either anonymously or that could facilitate, uh, more discussion? Um, maybe so that they could have more input. I had somebody ask me if I could ask things anonymously. And I said, can't you go to the department head? And they said, no. Um, there are certain things we, we're, we're not comfortable going because we're a little afraid that it will be, um, brought back on us. So that's my question for you as commissioners. Is, is there anything that we could do, um, maybe a a non-county board? I don't even know. Uh, but that could take those concerns and disseminate them to you, but that those people would not fear any kind of retribution. Um, and I, I don't know. And so that, that's just my question to you. There are people with concerns and they're not willing or able to state them, um, for fear of what might happen to jobs. So maybe, um, give some thought on that. And I would be happy to help in any way that I could. Like I said, people reaching out to me and I go, if you only knew, I'm, I'm no one. But I will help and I will always stand up. I, I do believe in people first, before buildings and before anything else. I believe in families. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Oh, there comes Jax again. State your name.
Jax Jensen, uh, Enix City Council. Uh, felt like I extended the meeting by about half an hour. So I apologize, but I appreciated the feedback on how that process had worked, whatnot. Um, just wanted to say, I, I'm totally in favor of that being implemented. The fact that you didn't have one before seems just mind-boggling that when you hire a new person, they don't know when they're gonna get a raise and what it's gonna be and all the rest of it. So, yeah, glad that, oh, she stepped out. Glad she put in the work to get that done. Um, I was supposed to address you.
Yeah.
If you would let her know that there are several, uh, private groups that get together and talk about these issues. And there's all sorts of elected officials that show up and communicate, that'd be awesome. There, anyone's welcome to join and There, anyone's welcome to join and come discuss ideas and then find people to come bring them to you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll move on to two. Discussion and possible approval of Utah indigent defense grant application for the 2023 fiscal year. Shane Manuelli, thank you.
And so last time I was here, we were putting together an application with indigent defense commission and that application was approved. And so our grant was approved to continue funding for a managing defender, administrative defender. We were approved for an additional district court defender and the approval for the social worker, we are number one on the list, but they had much more interest than anticipated. So they're just seeing if they can spread that out a little bit more. But I do anticipate we would get that if we want to utilize it. And so today the request is just that we accept the grant funding to move forward. I don't have paperwork like we used to do where I'd come up and hover over you for five minutes as you sign 20 pages. They'll send that electronically just to make it easier. But I just asked for approval of the grant funding for us to utilize for that additional district court defender and continue the managing defender system. And, and then approve the social worker if that money is allocated, which I do anticipate it being done. They just have to have one more meeting on it.
Is that something that you feel would be helpful for your office then?
Oh, yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we can, uh, let's, I'll call for a motion.
Cabinet for approval of Utah indigent, indigent defense grant application for the 2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like to just take a moment and thank Shane for his work for the county. Shane's been awesome and he's moving on to greener pastures, but we wish you well in your endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done for our county.
Yeah, I would like to thank you too.
Well, thank you.
And we're excited to have Candace.
But I'll be around.
Thanks.
Thanks Shane.
Okay, we will go on to number three, presentation and clarifying our mission and purpose for the Canyon Creek surface. Kate Sorenson.
Hello. Thank you for having me at commission meeting today. My name's Kate Sorenson and I'm the executive director of a local nonprofit called Canyon Creek Services. We've been in our community for a really long time. We were, we were incorporated in 1994 by a small group of citizens who knew that there was a need for individuals who were experiencing domestic violence. I am here for a few things today. The first one is to introduce myself formally to the commission as I am the most recently appointed executive director for the agency in December. And this is my first opportunity to come and speak with all of you. And also to invite you to learn more about our program, come and tour our facility. The county supports our agency in, in many ways and financially. And so I think it's important for us to have a knowledgeable relationship and make sure that we can partner together effectively. Uh, the last thing that I, that I had today was that on behalf of our board and our organization, I'm here to present a statement on behalf of Canyon Creek Services and I'll read that for you. Canyon Creek Services, CCS is a nonprofit organization that provides services to survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Our mission is firmly rooted in creating communities free of domestic violence and sexual assault. CCS gratefully acknowledges the support we continually receive from individuals, public and private entities and community allies who align with our vision in both financial and all other charitable means. We couldn't do this important work without it. Our staff and volunteers strive daily to keep this vision alive in the valuable frontline work that we do. It is an honor to do work that changes lives for the better every day. Under federal tax law, 501(c)(3) nonprofits, which CCS qualifies as, cannot endorse or oppose candidates and therefore must remain neutral in this election. We also recognize the importance of civic engagement as well as the First Amendment right to free speech. Therefore, we return our focus and attention to serving CCS's mission, having already served over 700 survivors in this fiscal year. We welcome and appreciate the support of community leaders and candidates dedicated to making our beloved community one that is free of domestic abuse and assault. And with that, does anyone have any questions for me?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Well, so I, my history, my history with, with Canyon Creek as well as, and I don't remember what the predecessor to Canyon Creek was. I don't, I don't remember.
We're New Hope Crisis Center. We were Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center. We've been a variety of names.
It's changed over the years. So in my history, not only in law enforcement, my law enforcement relationship goes back 26 years. But even prior to that, I worked for Iron County Ambulance and oftentimes we responded actually to the center. I don't know, different things. Could you, or, or any of your board, can I, I want to talk about the, that's what I'm looking for, the, the transformation from the Women's Crisis Center into what you guys are today? With some of the responsibilities as far as, I don't know, just other generalized type of abuse. The bullying, the whatever else. Could you talk about that transformation? I think that's important to, to update us as far as, as the history, the, the evolution of the center, if that makes.
Shh, shh, Dan.
Dan.
We gotta use strategy. Now, we're, we're very appreciative to Dan. He's, he's a great supporter.
We're going to get Dan a Justin Bieber mic?
Yeah. You could just stand here next to me if you want. We can share. I think that's, that's a great question. So our agency, before our recent name Canyon Creek Services was Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center. And when our agency was started, it was really just as a small house on a street that was supposed to have a couple of rooms for women who are escaping abusive situations. And it was only for women. We didn't deal with any other kinds of victimization. And as our agency has grown throughout the decades and as the needs of the community has evolved and changed, Canyon Creek has been able to take on additional responsibilities, grant funds, those types of things to respond to the increase in different types of victimizations. So we've taken on sexual assault victims, child abuse victims. We, we work closely with the Children's Justice Center, human trafficking. You heard Sheriff Carpenter mention that that's, that's a big issue in our, in our community. And a few years ago, we heard loud and clear from members of our community that, that there were men and other individuals who needed assistance from our agency, but they didn't think they could call us because our, our name insinuated that we would only serve women. And that's not true. We serve anyone who has been a victim of interpersonal violence, whether that is in a relationship, whether that is by a roommate or by someone that is in their life, any kind of abuse, we can assist with and help respond to. And that is one of those things that a nonprofit does is when there is a need in the community that either government or a private entity does not step up to, to be able to take on nonprofits fill that, fill that gap. And so we've had to adjust and expand to be able to, to be able to do that. So that's where we are now is we, we do all of that. One of our incredible programs is our prevention program. And that is to be able to attempt to stop that kind of stuff before it happens. So we work with the schools, we do presentations. We do awareness months in October and April to help educate people about what domestic violence, sexual assault or other types of abuse are so that they can identify it and get help if they need it.
Great. I think it's a great program and, and we're appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any comments? I, the other thing I, I don't know why I'm so chatty today. Uh, I know that, and we've had this conversation in the past. I think it's, I think it's important. I think it's important for folks to understand as, and I don't remember how much financial support the county gives. I know we.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, we worked through that. Rhanna and I worked that out, worked, worked through that a couple of years ago. What does that, I know that that doesn't run your program. What does that do as far as leveraging other stuff? I think that's important to.
That is a really.
Why, why that, I mean, kind of minimal amount. Does that really, does it make a difference in your program?
Financially, does it make a difference in our program? Um, we are a just under $2 million a year program. And so $10,000 does not go extremely far for, for our program. But what it does do, and if we have additional questions about this specific thing after, I'll give you the briefest of statements. Rhanna's here and she's, she's a wizard at this kind of stuff. But it helps us leverage other funds. So when we write grant applications, especially for our federal partners who give us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, even our states, any of our state contract information we have to provide. We have lines that ask how much our county and how much our city supports the organization. And it's hard on years when we have had to put zero and we get phone calls that say, why is your, why is your community not supporting you? And they don't want to invest in a program that doesn't have community support, even if we're serving hundreds and hundreds of people a year. And so for us, it does help us to be able to say, hey, there's, there is some support here. Can you help us leverage these other federal funds, state funds to be able to keep our program funded? So that is.
One, one thing that we, back when I was on the Cedar City Council, I remember, uh, back then it was Canyon Creek Women Crisis, I think, Center. Is that what your, your name's changed so many, many times?
Yeah, it's, it's been a little while.
I remember you guys used to come in and have to beg for money. It was, I think it was a mayor's discretionary fund. And you would come in every year and beg for whatever you could get. And I remember we made a decision, but this has been a long time ago, probably maybe eight years ago. That we made a decision to put that as a line item in the budget in Cedar City. And I think that helped your organization. So you didn't have to come in and you were unsure of how much you were going to get every year. And one other thing I wanted to talk about too was, I mentioned the debate, debate last night, we're getting some, uh, we're getting $120,000 every year for our opioid settlement from the, from the lawsuit. It's like an 18-year, uh, 120,000 a year for 18 years. And that money's to be spent on treatment, on mitigation, on, on these things that will help with, with the damages caused by that addiction. And I don't know if we could explore.
I bet we could.
Explore maybe use, using some of that funding to help your organization. But we ought to explore that.
Clearly some of those abusers are an opioid user.
Because it has to be spent for those specific purposes. But we, we could probably look into that possibly.
We, we absolutely welcome that partnership. So we'd be happy to, to speak further. And, and I think that's the point in me coming today is to make sure that those connections are strong between our agency and the commission, especially since we're serving so many individuals in our county. And to make sure that there is a relationship that's existing, that we can have conversation when we need to do that. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to come and, and, and speak with all of you and I'll be back.
Okay, we appreciate you coming. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kate.
Just briefly, that offer was, oh, sorry, Jenny Hendricks.
Name.
I am on the board at Canyon Creek, although right now I'm not speaking for the board. I'm speaking just as my own self. If, if some of that opioid settlement could find its way to Canyon Creek, it would be deeply appreciated. The, the budget, of course, at a 501(c)(3) that serves the most vulnerable in our community is, it's such a, a vital service and one that really needs the investment of the county and the support of elected people. Recently, even though Canyon Creek is strictly apolitical, not a political organization, in fact, it is in the bylaws to not be political. The organization has been drawn into a sort of a political football. Some of our staff have been approached and bullied and intimidated by elected people and it's not appropriate. These people are putting their heart and their soul and everything they have into serving the most vulnerable people in our community. And the county commission should be jumping up and down and supporting this organization with everything possible that you have. Because if organizations like this go away, it falls to the county and it falls to the municipalities. So just as a citizen, I would ask that this organization and the staff be left out of the political arena. If there's a problem, there's sort of a chain of command that every organization has and Canyon Creek is no different. Thank you.
Any other comments up there? We appreciate, oh, one more. Yep.
Cheryl Wicker, this is one of the examples that I'm talking about, that we have something in place that people are protected from political things when, when they do have an opinion that's different than the county or the commissioners. And what is something that we can do as a community to make sure that that doesn't happen? Because I, I believe that many people coming together with different mindsets are always going to come up with solutions that work. Then if we have everybody with the same opinion, um, talking to each other, we don't really come up with, with a consensus that works. And so what can we do as a county? Can there be a, a group that makes sure, a watchdog group? I don't know what it is. But I would be willing to help. And what is it exactly that we can do? And I agree that this organization, I worked for the Family Support Center years ago. But these organizations, there is no room for anything political or anything that gets in the way because it is essential to these kids and to these, to these families. And that will always be where my heart is. So.
Yeah, we will look into that. Okay.
I, I just wanted to say something real quick. I'd just like to thank all of you for your work in the community. I know there's a lot of board members here. Some of my dear friends are on the board for this amazing organization. As a commission, we really do look forward to working with your amazing nonprofit and helping those that are most vulnerable. I really do. And I look, I look forward on focusing on the organization and all the great things that you do for the victims in the community. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, I think we'll go ahead and move on. We will review and approve the results of the tax sale held on Thursday, May 26, 2022. Lucas Little.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we had the tax sale a few weeks ago. This year we used a new company, which was Public Surplus. So with, with them, I mean, there was a lot of changes and kind of new for our bidders that participate in the auction. Um, so there were a few, few roadblocks with getting registered and getting their deposits and things. But overall, the auction itself went really smooth. Um, once everyone got registered. So there's a few things we're looking at for next year to change and make it better. Um, so there goes even, even better next year. Um, we had 68 properties that were up for auction this year. We sold all of them except for one property. And the total amount that we collected was $571,883. And of that, $525,647 was surplus money, which will go back to the previous owners that lost their properties. Um, comparing that to last year, we had 98 properties. So there were 30 more properties the year before. And there was a total sales of $569,000. So even with 30 less properties, we still collected a couple thousand dollars more um, this year than last year with that many less properties. And I think that's probably due to the real estate market and, and how much that's gone up. So any questions or anything?
I don't think so. I, oh, does Dan have something to?
This is an auditor thing, so.
The property that didn't sell, maybe you could talk a little bit about, it was kind of a weird, an oddball.
Okay. Yeah. So the one property that didn't sell, I mean, it was 0.16 acres out in Burl. I mean, there were other properties, the same size out close by. But the recorders, it had been recorded as zero acres. So in the description, it was showing as zero acres back. So in the description, it was showing as zero acres back whenever it got recorded. So that was probably why it didn't sell, but yeah, that was, that was the only one that.
So that'll find its way onto our surplus list. Okay. And with, those do sell off of there, so. Those are all 50 by 142 feet. All 4,000 of them.
With, with no water on them.
No water, no nothing.
We got lots of them. Okay, I guess we could call for a motion.
Whose turn is it? I'll do it.
Oh.
Maybe it was yours.
I think it's mine, sorry. I'd just like to move to re, to approve the results of the tax sale held on Thursday, May 26th and presented by Lucas Little.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then if you could each sign just the same paper, the back page, and then I'll get it after.
Okay. Alrighty, well, we'll move on to agenda number five. Discussion and a possible approval of the Utah Rural County Grant Program Application for Fiscal Year 2023, recommended by the Iron County Economic Development Advisory Board, Danny Stewart. And there he is.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate the time to be here to discuss this. This is a fairly new program, as you are aware. I'll take a few minutes to describe what we've done with the grant that was awarded for this fiscal year and then present our recommend, the committee's recommendation for the application for the coming year. You should have a copy of this as well, but this is how this worked out. This, just a little very brief background on this program. This was put forth by the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity a couple of years ago to better address counties' needs with economic development. Previous to this, there were about a dozen different rural programs. None of them really fit all of rural Utah. They, they fit very specific parts of rural Utah. Governor's Office created this grant program so that counties could have more say in those types of things that move the economy. As part of that, we have a, an advisory committee that we meet at least quarterly. We've ended up meeting a little bit more than quarterly, but to discuss this and other economic development needs in the county. Prior to this, this grant program, we did have an advisory committee. I've always answered to an advisory committee and, and I appreciate their help and their work in, in helping us to, to best utilize this grant program. So currently for fiscal year 22 and, and the state is on the July 1 fiscal year. I, I'm showing three categories here, that the grant funds that are awarded from the state, the matching contribution, which is required by our county to have because of our population. We're considered a third-class county, so we have to have at least a 40% match for every project. And then the total between the, the match and the grant on that far right. The, the first one that we've had this year, this is a retail analytics program that we've had access to and it's been extremely powerful and extremely helpful in our efforts with not only retail recruitment, but we've also been able to utilize the data from this program with our airport, with tourism, with other projects throughout the county. In essence, what it does is it tracks who's in our county, where they're coming from. It's helping us to tell our story as we attempt to retake, to recruit retail, that we don't fit a standard urban kind of model where a store will only come to a city where there's so many residents within a 10-minute drive time. 10-minute drives times don't mean much out here and that's the story we're trying to tell. With this, we've been able to, to show that people who are coming here and spending money in specific places, on average, are coming from more than 40 miles away. Two-thirds of the people who are spending money in Cedar City or Iron County and specific businesses are generally more than 40 miles away. So that's been very helpful as we've had discussions with, with retailers that we're working on recruiting. Other funding, Business and Innovation Center, I think you're aware of this, a partnership between Southwest Technical College, the university, Business Resource Center, and all of those partners are now in one location. We've used this grant to help get that up and running and also to do some seed funding for startups. This is the first year we're doing that. So far, it's been relatively, actually quite successful. We just started a new cohort of six companies that are going through the startup program, plus there are some other things that, that are happening there with the Business and Innovation Center. The next one on here, you may recall Craig Isom, who works for SUU, he was the Director of the Small Business Development Center for many years. He is now working specifically on this EDA Entrepreneurship Program. Federal EDA matched funds from us and from other sources, from the university, from the Paiute Tribe, and others to be able to bolster tech and entrepreneur programs. There are two people who have been hired to help with that effort. There have been 24 new jobs created thus far. It started in October. Anyway, we're, we're tracking that. We are committed to three years participating in that program. So this was the first year, this last year. And then Cedar City and Parowin were both named Main Street Utah Communities. This was a new program that just started this last year through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, recognizing that main streets are where communities' character and a lot of kind of an economic base and some of the things that set communities apart. Parowin is a, there's so many different classifications. They are a Class 1, Cedar City's a Class 2, Cedar City qualified for some grant funding. We used that and as part of our match to get some, some funding for downtown improvements and planning for additional improvements in Cedar City's historic downtown for the next several years. So that's what we've had this year. You'll see that our matching funds are far above and beyond the, the minimum required 40%. We feel like we're gaining great traction with these programs. The Buxton Analytics is only one year. It's so expensive, we're not going to keep it every year. We're going to look for that or a similar program, maybe every two or three years, depending on what our needs are. So we can gather as much data as we can for a year and then use that for a couple of years and then maybe come back and try it again with that or, or a competing, competing company. But any questions with that year's programs or requests? This is what we've received and that's what we're currently doing. The next slide is what the committee has asked me to present to you for approval today. So the first one is year two of three for the EDA Entrepreneurship Program that I discussed. The second is continuing the same ask for the Business and Innovation Center for seed funding. The way that this seed funding works, just so that you're aware, when, I think they had about 30 companies, is that right, Mike? That came in and requested to be part of a cohort to, to really be able to utilize that Business and Innovation Center. There were selected five and there's, I think, one more being added to that cohort. But they can qualify for some of that seed funding. They just have to really, they have to match it on their own and they have to be working actively on their, their program. They have to work with all of our business resources to make sure that their business is planned and that everything. What, what we're trying to do is create an environment where businesses can start up and have a bit of a safety net until they get up and going. And we've, we've got some really cool things over there, several patents pending on new products and, and a lot of different things. We'll need to get you over there sometime. Anyway, that's number one and two. One program that was taken away when the state eliminated a whole bunch of programs at once was a county grant program or a statewide small business grant program. In the past, we've only been able to use that in the smaller portions of Cedar, of Iron County. We've had a few successful small business grants in Parowin, in Enech, in Bryanhead. We are creating with the Business and Innovation Center and their partners, an Iron County Small Business Grant Program. We're requesting $60,000 of this grant to be matched with $60,000 from the Cedar City Redevelopment Agency to create a small business grant program that is based on the, the one that used to exist. The only difference is this will not be limited to just with facilities, with equipment, or with new positions that can help those businesses to grow.
So is that, Danny, is that 60,000, is that a grant that we're getting from?
We're getting a grant from the state.
From the state. And then, and then who's, and then the matching is coming from?
The matching is coming from the Cedar City Redevelopment Agency.
Okay.
Yeah. So what, what our goal is with this is just to help small businesses, mainly who are looking at equipment or improvements they're building that will help them grow their business.
Do they, is it a loan or is it a grant?
It, it's a grant. They have to match it one-to-one. So if they're asking for 10,000, they have to invest 10,000 for a piece of equipment or whatever that might be. So we're not just passing it out. We need to make sure that what they're doing is at least one-to-one to be able to accomplish what it is. And in their application, they need to show creation of new jobs, capital investment, how this specifically will help them grow to create new jobs in the county. So that's the real goal. There are a lot of businesses out there. So the Business and Innovation Center is really looking specifically at startups and smaller businesses that are maybe within the first five years of their starting. The grant program is going to be looking at more established businesses that are ready to take the next step in growth. So as an economic development committee, you know, a lot of people look at economic development as just recruiting new companies, new businesses to come in from the outside. We're trying to utilize this grant to really focus on businesses that are already here or that could potentially be here through startups. So if somebody's already sold on, on Iron County, let's keep them here and let's help them to succeed.
Oh, yeah.
The, the final one, Cedar City Historic Downtown Grant Program. As I mentioned, Cedar City qualified for a Utah Main Street Grant for 30,000. A portion of that we're using as a match. We're also using matching funds, again, from the Cedar City Redevelopment Agency to help specifically with businesses in Cedar City's downtown. We're going to give this Main Street program a go, see how it goes and if we can help make improvements in the downtown that will help businesses there flourish. As I came on to Economic Development Office as an assistant about over 10 years ago, there was a program like this in place. It went on for just a year. There was $200,000 that was granted to improve buildings in the downtown. As a result of that, we, we ended up with projects like Central Wood Fired Pizzeria, The Depot Grill, which has now changed, but other projects like that that made improvements to buildings and brought the value of those buildings up. And when that first program happened about 10 years ago, it resulted in the creation of 56 jobs plus just the investment in, in the downtown. We want to do that here. We want to grow Parowin's downtown as well so that it can start qualifying for these sorts of things as its status improves at the state level. So that's a rundown. Any questions about these recommendations from my committee?
I, I, I'd just say thank you for everything that you're doing on this front. You know, when we, thinking of our business, when we started our business 30 years ago or whatever, I mean, we were flying by the seat of our pants, I, I have to say. And, and any of this help would have been really nice and really wonderful for businesses. The failure rate for new businesses is high, isn't it?
It is, and it changes, but it's up to 50%, depending on the type of business.
Yeah.
Not always, but.
Yeah, but if you could get a little bit of help to get started, I'm sure that's got to be just wonderful for these new businesses.
That's what we look at and we have had resources like the Small Business Development Center. We have now the Utah's Women's Business Center of Utah. We have these different organizations and they have great tools, but they never have any sort of operating or marketing budget. They just have the expertise there. And this Business and Innovation Center helps bring businesses in to utilize all of those services better. They're, they're going to get help writing business plans, marketing plans, budgeting, and, and help so that that failure rate is not so high. That's really what we're trying to do is get local companies to that next step or get them started and off on the right foot, so.
I can echo what Marilyn said. I remember when we started our business in 87, I had $100,000 that, that we borrowed and it bought four machines and three-phase power from industrial road over to the shop and that was gone. It didn't last very long. And it was tight, so.
So, so we appreciate that the state is looking to counties and asking us, what is it that makes a difference in your county? We feel as a committee that these things, and I say we, I'm not a member of the committee, but feel that these are the types of things that can help local businesses succeed. And as we have more and more success stories about our Innovation Center, this, the word's going to get out. And we're not going to be carrying that program forever with grant programs, but we want that to flourish and remain part of our community and, and help businesses succeed here.
Yeah, that's really good.
If I can throw out a, just on the Innovation Center, I attended a, they're, I don't know, I don't remember what they called it. The other night, they're kind of, they're, they're starting a speaker series, kind of, for entrepreneurs and, and such. The, so the first speaker was Jason Adams. He's the president and CEO of Beck's Sunglasses, who, who's turned into, it's turned into a really successful organization. He and I chatted for quite a while after the meeting and he's like, man, if I would have had what the, the, the resources of the Innovation Center, he's like, it could have knocked years off my process. But also, he's like, I can still see where the use, I, I still see where, I mean, I could use these resources now, even as a successful company, these principles could go a long way. But, I mean, we're, by no means is this an announcement or, or anything, but you know, we're, we're trying to recruit him and his organization to Iron County. And, and we've told him that, it's not a surprise, we're, you know, we, but you know, something that might be a deciding factor is something like the Innovation Center that's, that's here and can really help expand those businesses. You know, we're kind of, I don't know, I don't know if it's joking, tongue-in-cheek or not. We're like, we, you would fit really well in Iron County. You're exactly the, you know, the type of business that we're, that we would love to welcome into our community. So, I mean, we're having those talks, but, but, but he's saying, hmm, the Innovation Center is really something that would help me consider moving an operation to Iron County.
Yeah, but we have another company that has moved here and they've operated as an online business. They located here out of Nevada and it's just a small, two-employee company. And they say, we're really great at making what we make and we sell it online. But the Innovation Center is now saying, look at all these other things that you can do. So if you have opportunities and you would like to visit and tour that sometime, they have maker space, they have co-working space, they have instruction, they have all of these resources available and it's really quite a fantastic thing and I'm happy to show that off. And I get, I get speaking faster because I know I got a lot of stuff to cover in a short amount of time. But coming back to this, this program is basically $200,000 awarded from the state to a rural county. The county committee has asked, how would you like to break that $200,000 up for this fiscal year? And then report on it and show that you've had success. This is what our committee has come up with. These are the amounts that they've come up with and they've found the matching entities to, to help those things happen. And just here today to ask for approval for this so that we can get the application in.
I think we could call for a motion.
I would, I would move for approval.
Yeah.
I have to switch my screen back over. I don't have my glasses, so I can't see the fine print. I forgot my glasses, yeah.
That little box, the lights. Hold it down.
So I got, I, I've got the agenda blown up like this big on my screen.
You can see it.
So I would move for approval of the Utah Rural County Grant Program Application for the Fiscal Year of 2023 as recommended by the Iron County Economic Development Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Danny. Okay, we will move on to number six. Discussion and possible. Discussion of Possible Approval of a Contract with Precision Development for Construction of the Newcastle Fire Station, Lester Ross. And this is quite a ordeal that we've been through too.
Yeah, this is one of those where you wanna talk about e- economic changes.
Yeah.
We could have built this fire station four years, two to four years ago. We'd be looking at half of this.
Half of the price.
Half the price, we are. Um, before I, uh, start, I just wanna kinda go over the bidding process. There's been a lot of confusion as of late on how we bid and why we bid and why, why do we use RFPs, why, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Even before Dan, we had a purchasing policy, but Dan has really clarified, I don't know if you've ever seen his flow chart. This is actually the flow chart I use.
He's, he's quite a graph guy.
He is.
And Lester, can I interrupt you real quick? So this is, this is kind of in conjunction with what Dan said, there's been a lot of in this wacky political climate we're in, there's been a lot of accusations and, uh, it's unfortunate those come and attack our staff and our processes when you guys are doing the best you can and, and following the rules. That those are, those false accusations are made and so this is partly just to clear up our processes and, and before you go on, I'll just say that I'm, I serve on the CDBG Board, I, I go to Salt Lake periodically where we approve projects and I remember being in the CIB when we were trying to get money for this project. And there's a lot of counties and I guess some of the criticism, um, and you, you'll probably cover this, but some of the criticism goes back to sometimes we only have one bidder. Um, and we, if we need the work done, a lot of times we go with that one bidder, that's all we have, that's all that wanna do the pro- the, the, the environment right now is-
Sometimes we have to beg.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, and some, the environment is such right now that I know that, uh, a lot of people are turning down two, three jobs a day, they're just, you just can't physically do all the work and and I know that a lot of meetings I've been to up north with CIB and CDBG Boards, they'll, they'll bid a fire station, they'll bid a critical thing they need to build and they don't have a single bid, not a single bid and they're just like, you know, we can't even get anybody to look at our project. So I guess when we have one bidder where we feel maybe fortunate.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times we do actually feel fortunate when we get to one bidder. But yeah, so, um, depending on the dollar amount, um, you know, if we're less than two thousand dollars, we can just call up and say, hey, can you come and do this, but anything over that, um, we start with, um, we have the option of uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars of getting three competitive bids. Believe it or not, that is exactly the problem, right now I'm actually trying to do blinds for the visitor center in the visitor center office building. I've gotten two competitive bids. Yeah, every other company looked at us and go, no, we're not even interested, we're not going to bid at all. And so that leaves me with the RFP process, which, um, um, and most of the projects I'm involved is, happens to be in the RFP, uh, side of the realm just because I I get more involved when there's a lot more money involved. Just on how our department is set up, but, um, with the RFP, um, when I, um, when I say we're following it, we, we write the RFP, it's, it's reviewed, we put a public notice on the state, uh, public notice site. Um, we put a copy of the RFP on our website and we also send it out to anyone and everyone we can think of. When it comes to buildings, I have been kind of having a list of people that has shown interest in the past and I just keep that running total and, and I have some that sent back with me going, hey, we're, you know, we don't, we're not interested in doing work in Iron County and so I've taken them off the list, but, you know, so I'll send them a copy of the RFP depending on what it is. You know, um, you know, today I'm doing the, we had the, the fire station, so that one with all the contractors, I sent it to the home builders and they sent it out to all their members. It's that, the, the beauty of the RFP process is, this is the most public and open forum for bidding because we put it out there and we try to encourage anybody and everybody to call. The hard part, you know, we used to put it in the newspaper. We weren't, the only thing I'd ever get from the newspaper is we would get a lot of, there's companies back, and most of them happen to be back east where they buy your, they buy your project and then they sell it to other people. Those were the only people that always ever contacted me from, from that. And so, like, we do actually get a lot of that and I do send them our information and so RFPs actually go onto their, their sites as well. Projects over the year that we've done, just like Commissioner said, uh, one good example, um, was the accessory model. Um, I, I don't know if you ever remember that, that was last, uh, last year or might have been, uh, it was first last year. We went through the, the entire process, we only got one bidder, we looked at it and go, and then, you know, we decided it was too expensive, that's, it, it wasn't worth the, the, the benefit that we were trying to get wasn't worth the cost and so we chose to scrap that. The other projects, um, we, we've done, uh, the fair building. We, um, we only got one bidder, we were going to have two honestly and the problem, what happened to the second one is, um, he got really sick, actually it was Precision Development, was all set to, um, bid on it against Carter's and Dennis ended up in the hospital with COVID for, and just about died on us. And so they, you know, they were not able to bid and because of time sensitive, failure of the project, we had to keep going. Senior Center, we had Carter's and, and Zwick. Where, you know, Zwick was almost double a Carter's bid. Then the best ideal su- situation is the Iron County Road Building and I, um, when we bid the road building back in two, uh, uh, twenty nineteen, we actually got, I wrote them down, but I'm just gonna give you the numbers cause for time. Four, five, six, seven, we actually got seven bids on that project.
That was a different time, wasn't it?
It was a different time, we were kinda just right, we were, things were picking up, but it, there was kind of a lull, that's right. When the economy is like, everybody's like, I don't know what's gonna happen, are we gonna tank, what, but, you know, that would be ideal, I would love to have that many on, on all these processes, but, um, you know, when I, when I do, you know, the competitive bids, I would like to point out that, um, we don't necessarily have to take the, the low bidders. When we did the RFP for this building, uh, when we chose the architect, we did not choose the lowest bidder. We chose the bidder that was best suited, that we felt, uh, for Iron County. I had one coming up, uh, last year that we did for cabinetry. I personally felt that Cousins Cabinets was the best person for the job because they were the only ones that met all my criteria in my bid, bidding documents. And I was overruled by Commissioner Cousins saying, no, this other guy will do a great work and I feel better than them doing the work and not having his, his own son do it. And, but, um, I don't know if you wanna-
Well, and in that process, I've, I've been, you know, where that's my expertise, I've, I've enjoyed designing those, those needed improvements and-
Which has actually saved us hundreds and thousands of dollars on having, it's so nice going, able to go, um, we actually are doing our office right now, they're actually installing the cabinets today.
Oh, wow.
Where we went in and said, hey, this is what we wanna bid and we're actually going in to bid cabinetry with a cabinet drawing and so we're comparing apples to apples, which is really hard when you're bidding.
I just wanted to add a, a few things, cause we did overhaul our purchasing policy, our procurement policy recently when Mike Edwards was here. Sam, you're glad you missed that, it was, it was a lot of fun, uh, with committees and so forth, but with another challenge that, especially when we do building projects that, that Lester's involved with, if we have like the CDBG lending that our, um, um, grant and lending that we get, if it's a federal source, we have, we have to ask our contractors to, to go to a higher level of, of requirements of what they have to do as far as all of the paperwork and everything that they have to show and wages, Bacon Da- Bacon Davis, if it's big enough. And there's a lot of contractors that just don't wanna touch these and so a, a lot of times it's, it's the same couple of contractors that deal with these federal contracts that'll even touch some of these projects and it makes it a challenge.
And it drives, and it's an example of why the cost is driven up.
It is, it is, it is, it is frustrating.
Well, and some of it also has to do with, because contractors have different, uh, bonding amounts and- Sorry Marilyn. Uh, yeah, contractors have different bonding amounts and depending on the project, you know, depending on if they can even bond the project. And because, you know, when you're talking millions of dollars, that's a huge bonding capability.
The other thing I want, I would like the public to understand is we have different thresholds of when we require the county to, to go out to bid. If it's under twenty-five hundred dollars, the, uh, department head can just make a decision and just do that. We, we don't wanna handcuff our departments that are trying to operate day to day, that they have to go out to bid to everything. If it's between twenty-five hundred and fifteen thousand, then they need to get, they need to get three quotes. And that's kind of loosely defined, they can get a phone quote, they can go look on the internet and see what a price is, they can compare coupons in a newspaper or whatever, if it goes over fifteen thousand and they go to the RFP process, which is this formal bidding process. Which, you know, somebody like Lester deals with this all the time, but other our departments have to go to the RV process, it scares them. They're like, this is this big complex process, we've actually really streamlined it, um, it, it's pretty effective, the state has backed off on some of the requirements, we put it on our website. We have to have it out for ten days, we can put it in the paper, but we don't have to and we try to make it easy for our departments to do that. And once we've gone through that process, if, if we have ten, ten potential bidders or one, we can make that selection, move on. But there are some other, there are some other, um, exemptions to having to do the RFP process. If it's available on a state bid contract, we can just go, we can pull the trigger and go because we know that they've gone through all of this scrutiny on the head, on the front end in order to get that state bid. So I encourage departments when they come and they're like, ah, they're hesitant, I say, well, if there's a state bid, you can just pull the trigger and go. We know that we're, we're using good use of the, of the citizens' money. If it's, if it's being purchased at an auction, closeout sale, bankruptcy sale, um, or a single source provider, there may only be literally one entity that sells that thing or does that thing, period. It doesn't make any sense to go bidding that out if there literally is only one provider of that, of that thing and so we are able to do that. Of course, I always encourage them, let's see if we can get the best value for our buck. Or for Utah Correctional Industries Division, we can buy straight from them. And that's all I wanted to say, thanks for letting me jump in on that. If any of the department heads want it, we do have this flow chart, which is really easy, everybody asks and it needs to be updated a little bit, cause I think it was twenty-five hundred, but this was the phase one, the first version of it.
Thanks for using the line.
Sorry Rich, I forget your heart of hearing. He's also heart of secretary, so. He's, he's dealing with Nate's secretary today and so he's out of luck.
He needs one.
But yeah, so the first one-
With that, yep.
So the first one I have is the Newcastle Fire Station and I will hand this to you.
We built that road building, just real quick, I think it was, our bid was like eight hundred thousand dollars and, and if you compare that building to this little fire station in Newcastle, I don't know, you could probably fit three of these fire stations into that building.
Yeah.
It's ludicrous what has happened.
Yeah, what it's cost. So, um-
Shame, that's what it is, it's a dirty shame.
This is one point, well, let's see.
Yeah, so we got, um, we went through the RFP process and we got, uh, we had three qualified bidders. Um, this one we had a mandatory, uh, pre-bid meeting. I'm gonna clarify on that, a lot of times I do that on construction process. That makes it, it has two potential things, why I have a tendency to do that on a lot of them, is one, it helps with the local, our local contractors keeping our local guys in it and it also eliminates the contractors from around the country that is just gonna throw a number at us and have no knowledge of, of of our, of our process and what we're looking for. So this process had that where, um, you actually, there, there was a meeting that everyone had to show up for and all three of these contractors did show up to that meeting and were, were on that, that mandatory list. These were written down, they ended up in chronicle, or numerical order, which I didn't mean to, but that's how it, they did, but, uh, we had provisioned development for nine hundred and thirty-five, um, thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, Zwick was one million, three hundred and thirty-two, nine hundred and five dollars and then Bud Mahz, uh, bid at one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Going through the bids, they were all comparable bids and so we have decided to go with a provision, Precision Development. After we selected Precision Development, we had worked with them on cutting some of the cost out of the, out of the budget.
Value engineered?
We engineered, we had a lot of questions when we were bidding and they were asking, they were like, no, we will to keep, to keep the bidding process fair, we made them go off of the construction documents. Then afterwards, we've worked, worked with Precision, we changed, um, I'm not gonna say the brand of fans on, on here because Commissioner Blake has sensitive ears, um, to a non-
Never mind. I was gonna fill in your blanks.
All right, thank you. To an, you know, to a non, uh, name brand, uh, fan or, uh, of equal quality, but you know, which was, you know, a fourteen thousand dollar sa- savings.
The big A?
Yeah, the big A fans. Which are, are great fans and so we worked that out, um, you know, and so we were able to cut sixty-eight, just over sixty-eight thousand dollars out of the process which is a lot to cut out of a process, but still we are over budget on what we had originally budgeted from the CIB and our matching grant.
So we oughta clarify too that the county purchased the building from CO Building already, so that's, that's over and above this cost, right?
Yeah, we, we, we already spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the metal building that's actually sitting on site. Which was a great move, we bought that building a year ago, lucky enough and the building would probably be about double now.
Yeah.
So, so.
So we basically budgeted, um, five hundred thousand, we had five hundred thousand from Community Impact Board, two hundred thousand from CDGB and then we were gonna put in a hundred, so we're short that difference that we're gonna, Dan, are we, and you said we're okay within that fund to, at a one time, you feel comfortable?
Yeah, a couple of the projects we did pull out, we are going to have to still do, um, one of it will work with the, um, uh, work crew, um, to put the fence back between the fire station and the-
Road Department.
Road Department, uh, we included part of the fencing on this just because it's in, in, integrated into a retaining wall and we wanted to make sure that that was done correctly and a-
So, so the, with the value engineering, the total's eight sixty-seven, three thirty-four.
Yes.
And then we add plus the one forty, hundred and forty thousand for the, for the metal building, right?
Yep.
And then, and then we minus the, um, we had the, basically the eight hundred thousand that we had budgeted. So it was, it was, so we would have to make it the difference of two hundred and seven thousand, three thirty-four, is that right Dan? No worries.
Sorry.
That's right.
I didn't really go all the way into that more for the fact that, uh, Reed has been handling that side of it and I didn't know all the numbers, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to do a budget adjustment to top off what we had adjusted. We put in an extra hundred thousand if I remember right and of course this came in way above that. So we're gonna have to adjust this up to our, to the approved number and the question is, is do we give some wiggle room for any change orders, there's always something that comes in, so when we're doing budget adjustments, we're, we'll have that conversation, what we think. If we got this pretty much nailed down, then we can set that at our top end and that's what we'll-
I think it's, it's close to two hundred thousand more than we budgeted, that we have to-
Yeah, that's what we figured, we, because when we, before we started wiggling, doing the wiggle, we were about three hundred and seventy thousand over budget.
They cut off a lot, that was really amazing.
And even though this one is a lot of money, I feel good, really good about the Senior Center addition we did and the road shed, I mean, if we were to build those buildings now, they'd be at least double. So, you know, I, I, I mean-
We've gotta move forward with this, they really need this.
This fits into a broader pattern of, of this commission and, and Orion Riddle supporting the west, the western communities out there, this is, this is part of a, he's been, uh, working with the fire chiefs. I mean, this is a much needed and much valuable and valued, uh, part of their community out there, so I think this is, it's a remarkable thing to do.
They've had, they've had two trucks out there that they've had to, in the winter time, they have to drain the water out of them and, and store them in a potato, Bob Holt's Potato Barn. And it's not very conducive when you go to fight a fire to have your trucks empty, so. This will give them a place where they get a two bay addition where they can park their trucks and be ready and I think it's gonna help with the-
Heated, yeah.
It's gonna be heated. It's going to be heated, it's going to give them a place to meet. The community can use this.
Yeah, this actually has a nice community room that they can use for training and also they're, they can meet.
I think it'll improve the morale, Mike, and I'm sure that's, don't you think with the people out there, it's going to help so many things?
Oh, absolutely. And for whatever reason, our, our structure fires are up out there. Where we've, you know, not had a structure fire in years, we're having two or three a year over the last couple of years. So to have that equipment serviced and, and ready to respond, it's a really big deal. When we were out on that recovery the other night, there was a couple of folks there from Newcastle Fire, and we were talking about the building and they were, you know.
Pretty excited, I think.
They're like, oh, with building costs and everything, you guys aren't doing this anymore, are you? And we're like, oh, no, it's, I mean, it's still a priority for, for you guys and your community. And so it was, you know, it's something that they're paying attention to and they're very appreciative of.
Well, and where we've, I mean, where we already purchased the metal building, we really need to move forward. We could gamble and try to wait for a year or two and hoping prices go down, but I don't, it's a, it'd be a gamble, so.
And the longer the, the sooner you start, the longer the building's in service.
Yeah.
For the community. And, and you know, those little things become big things. We, we recently have made enragement with Dixie Power to have a ballot box out there. So we have a ballot box at Dixie Power on the corner of Minersville, Burl Highway.
Fifty-six and Burl.
Not Minersville Highway.
I think maybe we're ready for a.
Yeah, so your contract total with precision, it's not going to, like Dan said, it's not the budget total. We will.
Adjust it.
We'll adjust that one.
Yeah, yeah.
They have the firm number there. I apologize for, like I said, Reed has been handling the budget side of that, and he decided to go to England, so.
Oh.
So is there a, is there a total, is there a, is there a dollar amount attached?
Yes, there's a dollar match attached. It's eight-hundred-and-sixty.
Eight-sixty-seven-three-thirty-four.
Three-thirty-four is the contract.
Lost the one-forty, or do we, we're just, we're just voting on the eight-sixty-seven.
Yeah.
So eight-sixty-seven-three-thirty-four.
That's the contract with us and Precision Development.
Okay. That's, that's today's agenda. Today's number.
Yeah, that's.
And there's roughly a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, but that's going to have to be worked out with the.
And that'll be another approval?
No, we've already purchased.
That'll be part of the budget amendment that you have to do.
Amendment.
Yeah, the total cost is bigger than this of the entire project. But that's, that's the, our contract amount with Precision Development.
So the eight-sixty-seven-three-thirty-four is today's?
Yes.
Ready for motion? I'll move to approve the contract for Precision Development for construction of the Newcastle Fire Station in the amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-three-thirty-four. That represents about sixty-eight-thousand-five-sixty-six of value engineering that was done on that to try to get the price down. And probably also note that the a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar metal building was also purchased from CO Building previous from our budget, Fund XI.
Normally, they stick build stuff. That's why the building is separate, because it was just a purchase.
So we purchased it, and then, and then every contractor that bid on this knew we already had that. They didn't have to include it in their bid.
Yeah, we actually did the RFP process for that building last year. We're, we are hoping to have this in the ground by now, and I'm using it, but. Sometimes working with the state and federal funds.
Yeah.
The wheels move really slow.
Let's go ahead and do seven, too, because Lester, right here, discussion and possible approval of the contract for Gail's Total Lawn Care.
I made a motion. Do you want to finish that one?
Oh, yes.
I'm going to second it. I second it.
Moved in second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dennis was freaking out. He's thinking, aren't you guys going to?
We'll do number seven, and then we're, we're going to jump down. I know Paul's looking a little nervous there, back there. We'll, we'll jump down to ten and get him taken care of in just a minute.
Okay, yeah, this was, we put an RFP out for some landscaping to replace the grass around the new grandstands that we just rebuilt. Also to add some grass where the horseshoe pits were, and to replace the sprinkler system that I kindly ripped to pieces when we put in the grandstands. We, this is one of the examples where we only got one bidder. I talked to multiple companies. They seemed interested, and then they looked at their schedule and said, there's no way I can get this done by the fair. So Gail Landscaping out of Summit has did a proposal to provide, to install the sprinkler system, sod, new timers, concrete curbing around some, some of the grass areas over there, at the fairground, for a total of sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. That, this also, that, that also includes the sprinkler system around the existing stands. That was added into.
Around the existing what?
There was a little bit of confusion in my bidding where I was walking it the other day and realized I did not have them include the sprinkler system that got ripped out for that grass area that, in front of the, the.
Leechers?
The leechers.
Yeah.
And so I'm like, hey, we need to get that connected back in.
But not the additional over by the horseshoe pits. We're not going to do that at this time.
This one includes the horseshoe, this has the horseshoe pits in it.
But not.
But it does not, not the parking lot area is not included.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay. Probably approve that.
Okay, I would move for approval for awarding the contract services to Gail's Total Lawn Care in the amount of sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for the work at the fairground.
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Lester. Okay, we're going to jump down to ten. We'll have. Is that it? Thank you. Okay, discussion and consideration of memorandum of understanding with the US Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management and Iron County, considering preparation of an environmental assessment, EA, for the proposed Cedar City Field Office Emergency Stabilization and Rehabilitation Program in Iron County and Beaver County.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be really brief. What this amounts to is, I'm sure you're familiar with what we do, the actions we take following wildfires on public lands. You know, we refer to that as our Emergency Stabilization and Rehabilitation Program. Usually those things are unforeseen and fairly time-sensitive. We have a usually twenty-one-day turnaround on plans for those to get them in, to get approval from, from our headquarters, National Office. And so, so what this is, instead of trying to do an analysis on each individual fire basis as they occur in the interest of expediency and realistically implementing the program, this is an environmental assessment to analyze and disclose the effects of the entire Emergency Stabilization Rehabilitation Program field office-wide. As I'm sure you're all aware, also, things have changed over the years with the implementation of Utah's Watershed Restoration Initiative. Almost all of these actions now, very rarely do, do these fires exist on one agency or one ownership. They, they cross multiple jurisdictions. They include other federal lands, state lands, private lands within the counties. And so we used to pursue these efforts as individual entities in the past, but now through Utah's Watershed Restoration Initiative, we, we like to work through these cooperatively with private landowners, Natural Resource Conservation Service, State Institutional Trust Lands, Department of Natural Resources, all those, and the counties, to develop these plans and move them along. So in the interest of that cooperation, we're offering Iron County, as well as several others, the opportunity to participate in the analysis as a cooperating agency, which just gives us the government, government-to-government relationship, allows for more open communication and dialogue, and allows the counties and the other entities to provide information outside of the public comment period and the usual more, more bottlenecked communication channels, is all that is. So, you know, it just makes sense to us, as important as this is to all of the partners and the different landowners out there, that we'd extend that invitation. And, and that's, that's essentially it. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope.
No.
That makes it so that you can do the restoration on a fire very quickly.
Correct. So what it does is we get this decision in place, future decisions on individual fires. If we've done a thorough enough job of this analysis, I can do what we call a determination of NEPA adequacy and just issue a decision without going back out through the public process on each fire.
Like a boilerplate that's already done, you just boom, boom, boom.
Correct.
So let's just let it burn and let's rehab it, please. Did I really say that in a public meeting? Yeah.
Worked in decades past.
I know.
Well, thank you very much.
Make your waste long. Thank you, Paul. We need to vote on that.
We probably need to.
Yeah, and then that, that'll, they'll, they'll actually get us the, the actual draft MOA after, MOU after that.
But we need to approve it. Yeah.
So I'll move for approval of the memorandum of understanding with the US Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management and Iron County concerning preparation of an environmental assessment, EA, for the proposed Cedar City Field Office Emergency Stabilization and Rehabilitation Program, ESRP. Thank you, government acronyms, in Iron and Beaver Counties.
Second.
Moved in second, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We can strike number eight. If we could reschedule them again.
Yes.
Okay.
They were, they were able to attend yesterday but not able to attend today, the Utah Shakespeare Festival.
We're dwindling. We're dwindling in amount of people.
They had conflicts yesterday. So if we could bump them again to the next.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to the next meeting.
Okay.
That'd be great.
So we'll go back up to nine, discussion and approval for the engineer department to purchase a new excavator and sell a twenty-sixteen CAT excavator.
I'm looking at number eleven. You going to put the S back in wood?
It's not funny, is it, Georgia? You better stick around.
And I just preface this discussion with a statement that the reason we're doing this is because every time our auditor drove that trackhoe, the tracks fell off.
He didn't hear you. He didn't even hear you.
Dad, did you hear that?
You didn't hear that.
I said I'd like to preface this discussion with the fact that we're doing this because every time our auditor drove the old one, the tracks fell off.
I think it was the operator.
Actually, when Curtis did it, they fell off with Curtis, too, a couple of times.
They were pretty worn out, so.
Yes, it's, it's a situation which we, we caught ourselves in by surprise. We talked about it, we discussed it last year, all through the on-soon season, and then through the budget time. And everybody says, yeah, 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 we need to, we're, we're at that time.
And we did.
It was for trade-in, and then we didn't put it actually in the budget.
But then we couldn't get any, we couldn't get one anyway. We couldn't.
No, no.
You know, they don't, they're not available.
Yeah, it, it truly was. Since October, we've been reaching out, trying to find a trackhoe. And with no response, nobody would, would actually call us because they just couldn't guarantee they could get them, and supply chain was such a mess. But what I've given you is that we did end up with five, five bids, five different machines. So let me walk through my thinking, which is not as perhaps straightforward
Don't forget that, Paul.
as everyone else's. So we have on the first line there, the John Deere's cost new. The Komatsu new, the Case new, the, the CAT's a three-twenty-three or a three-twenty. That, that's if we were buying them outright and just no trade-in or anything. So our contract with Wheeler was a set purchase or repurchase price of a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars when we traded in the CAT. The, so, but when I went through and, and looked at things, our actual out-of-pocket was going to be on the CAT, the three-twenty-three was going to be a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. On a three-twenty, it was going to be a hundred-and-twenty thousand. That was after the buyback. But with my discussions with Century, they would guarantee a buyback of seventy thousand, but felt that we would do better selling it on our own. So if we sell it on our own, if we, if we took their buy trade-in, we would have out-of-pocket of a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars. If we get a hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, I mean, if we get a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, now we're out-of-pocket a hundred-and-twelve. And if we get a hundred-and-forty-five, which is ten-thousand dollars less than what the buyback was, we'd be in the seventy-two-thousand-dollar range. I was just looking at, at, at the CAT's for sale website just a few minutes ago. And our machine is selling anywhere nationally in the hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-dollar range. Now, that tells me that we would be reasonably looking for an out-of-pocket of, after purchase and then sell, more in the hundred-and-twenty to a hundred and, I should say, between a hundred-and-ten and a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Now, it is a buy and then sell situation. Now, Commissioner Cousins asked me a really good question about how, how does Case hold up in resale value versus CAT? Well, the, the bottom line is CAT starts out at fifty-eight thousand dollars more. So they have a higher buyback. It's just the nature of things. But when you look at it percentage for percentage, the CAT costs twenty-six percent more than the, than the Case. But the retention in value mirrors that down the road, five years down the road.
Because it's cheaper to begin with.
Exactly. So the, the CAT gets a, a value of five years down the road of twenty-six percent more than the.
Is there a qualitative difference in the machines?
No. No, it's a name. It's a name. It's just like, it's just like.
Curtis is pretty happy with this.
It's just like big fans that you can buy for fire stations. That, that big fan, I forget the first.
BA.
Yeah, the BA fan. It's, it's a name.
I can't believe no one said that word yet. It's a big-ass fan. It's an actual brand. If you, if you look at, they, they, they put it on there huge, loud and proud, and they. And they're good fans. Let's not tap dance around it. Like at the, down there at the, at the Diamond Z Arena.
Yep, they have them.
And they, they keep it cooled off in the summer.
Yep.
Right, right.
And it, and it's okay if you quote it.
Yeah, because, because that's their name.
It's in the Bible. I mean, if it's a quote, it's not like you're actually cussing. Samson and Delo. I've held my tongue long enough. I can hold it no more.
Right. Well, what, what's interesting is Curtis was saying to me, he says, if we, if we hunt around, we'll probably see this Case was built in Brazil, and if we hunt around, the CAT was built in Mexico, so. There, neither one of them.
As performance goes and, and service and all that.
Right.
Not a qualitative, significant difference.
And, and I, I just told the Commissioner Cousins of Woods yesterday. Curtis was quite surprised. He's run that Case for about sixteen hours, and he filled it up yesterday. He said that he would fill the CAT every day after running it for eight.
That's amazing.
Surprisingly.
Better gas mileage, that's, I mean.
We'll see if that, we'll see if that continues while the machine ages, but.
This case has a thumb on it, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, everything was compared most, you know, apples to apples.
Well, I'm glad we were able to buy it locally and, and have that serviced to us. That'd be good.
And that's good, too.
Yes, it'll be serviced. I, I compared all their warranties, and you'll see that down here further. Yes, it'll be serviced, I, I compared all their warranties and you'll see that down here further. And one of the things was, you know, the, the John Deere was available now, the Kamatsu was, good luck.
No.
Literally, good luck.
Cats.
Um, the Century is now, the cats they projected may be available by June first, maybe available. And that was their goal, so I am proposing and asking for the commission to, to authorize the purchase. Of uh a two thousand twenty one case CX two ten D. Excavator for the county, with permission to sell the cat.
On, on the.
On the auction.
Auction, okay.
Um, we could get seventy thousand dollars out of the gate, but.
Nope, here comes down again.
Be better to get more money.
Just to clarify, we will need to do a budget adjustment to, for, to, to expend the amount and of course for the revenue as well. Also, if you need somebody to stress test the case, I'm happy to help.
I already told Curtis that at the fairground, I says, you know, if you, if you keep up and I keep falling behind laying pipe, I'll never get to. To, to get on your machine.
We have a policy that, until there's thirty thousand hours, we don't let auditors run it.
All right.
Number for Commissioners.
Uh, the chair calls for a motion.
I'll move to approve the purchase of a new excavator, um, which is a Century. From Century Equipment Company, which is a KCX two ten D and um. And also in that motion include the, the authorization to sell our cat trackhoe.
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, which was a, was it a three twenty three?
I believe it was.
I think it's a three twenty three and um.
And you see that price is quite a bit more.
Second.
Uh, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries and we will go down to eleven.
Thank you, I'll go back.
Which took a long time coming, so Resolution twenty twenty two dash three. Clarifying the name of Wood Ranch Recreation Area and this is, this is Georgia. Smith Johnson that has come and she would like to talk a little bit about the history.
We'd appreciate that. Introducing me, I am George A. and Sabina Wood's youngest granddaughter, so out of sixteen children. Of George Henry Wood and Elizabeth Reiner Wood where this property was originally purchased. I've worked for twenty eight years to get this cha- name changed, so I'm appreciative to uh both you Commissioners. Paul and Marilyn Wood and Paul Cousins, one voice does make a difference. I just came from girl's state and I keep telling my girls that, so um. I am here just a little bit on the history of that and you have it up there, um. Worthwood was uh the son of. Um, Conroy Wood and uh when this property was sold, there was a lot of contention. But that's typical of a family of sixteen children, so my grandfather was the patriarch of that property. And so um the ten acres that uh Conroy had was the original ranch. That was ranched by um my great grandmother, Elizabeth Reiner Wood. And uh he used it as a trucking depot as well as ranching and then he turned it over to his only son. Worthwood and at that time, I don't think the family had a vision of it being sold to the county for recreational purposes. But as we, as the descendants have come along, can see the value of that decision. He and his wife were in realty at that time and so sometimes people have to pass away. In order for that to occur and I've worked for, for twenty eight years to get the name put back to Wood. Not Woods.
Yeah.
And not with a hyphen or anything else, there were original woods that came into this county with the nineteen. As well as two family of Wood, of which I'm a descendant of and with the progression of this county growing. With the population growth and the problems that come and so forth and so on, I would like that name to be. Established as Wood, simply as Wood and the reason being is.
Clarification so that as it goes on and we don't have somebody leave the apostrophe out again, then we don't have to have that. Um, John, do you have that picture, I, just send it to your, to your text?
And I did have family members come yesterday.
Can you do that?
Um, yeah, it'll take me a sec.
Okay, family, we did have family members come yesterday, so we all had lunch together and then they sent me back here today.
Oh, good.
Which is okay.
Dang it.
It was, I'm the one who has constantly said, well, why can't we get it changed back to Wood? And every time we go up, my husband has threatened to cross out the S or paint it out, so today I'm really.
We actually put a little, the apostrophe was just a little piece of plastic to, to show that. So m- my family is also this Wood family and so. We, we also felt the same way that, that it should be Wood and not Woods. People will probably still call it because it's possessive of Woods owned it before. Um, I wanted to tell a couple of little stories real quick, the big, the big uh where they have the baseball diamond. Where they had the, the ice skating rink, that was, that was a, a big garden and they grew a lot of. Because it's so high, they grew a lot of uh potatoes, carrots, onions and the story went that. Uh, some of the onions were so sweet from there that you could just take them and eat them like an apple, yeah, yeah. And, and another one was the old homes, anybody that ha- have uh, or our age or whatever. Um, the um big pavilion, the old homes were right in that area right there. And um Matt's grand, uh, grandpa told of the story of his mother getting up. Him up in the morning and saying, come out here and look, they had, they had a little um corral out in front of the house. And it had a milk cow in it and the milk cow, um, they would go out and milk it in the morning. And, and there was a stool that you would sit on and it, and the milk would slop over on the stool quite often. And so he, uh, the mother got him up in that morning and said, we'd um, come and see Will. And he ca- brought, came out and uh looked out there and there was a bear standing licking the, the um. Milk stool, so that's kind of a fun little story, but anyway, um.
And that's where Elizabeth had the original cat cabin and the milk barn and the range right there. And that milk was turned into cheese and it was turned into uh. Uh, butter as well and it fed the miners as well as the workers.
That's what I was gonna say, a lot of the products that came from Woods Ranch would go down there, we go. Isn't that a beautiful sign that they just made?
Sign, it's a wonderful sign. Ironically, where my property is, I look straight down on that ranch. So I have a great, great heritage there and a great pride, but I'm proud of the Wood name.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we all are.
You, it took twenty eight years.
We finally did and here's some, here's some uh of that documentation that.
Oh, good, and I have some for you too, but it's in a book, yay thick, so we'll have to get together, so I thank you for that. And having a, a movement and a vote for that to occur, so I thank you.
We'll, we'll do the motion.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure to sit through all of this, I've been sitting through it for a whole week.
I know.
With girl's state, um, but I usually conduct and teach about the city commission or meetings. And so it's been a pleasure to sit through the iron, the county commission.
Well, that's nice.
A lot of progress that's.
Sorry, we waited till the very end, but.
Well, and our youth, our youth are doing a wonderful job here and I, I would literally say. We have youth that go to the county, or the city commissions, we need to get more here at the county to, for them to have. A broader understanding and this year Weaver State, um, they messed up, too bad. So I'm headed over to Minnie Bend- uh Mindy Benyon.
Benson.
Benson, excuse me, yeah, Benson, I have so much on my agenda and uh we're going to. Hopefully see if we can get her to bid for girl and boy state again to come back to SUU. Because the last five years, all of our governors, all of our uh girls nation, boys nation. And boys governors have all come from the south, they've come from both Iron County and Washington County, so it says something that we're doing right.
Nice, nice.
So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll have a, we can have a motion on number eleven.
I would move uh approval of Resolution twenty twenty two dash three. Uh, clarifying the name of Wood Ranch Recreation Area.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, do we have any thing else as far as county boards?
Think we need to get Jen a dirty Dr. Pepper, is that what you're?
Oh, man.
Like a Coke, just stray Coke or coconut, okay, I'll, I'll keep that tucked away.
I think I'll buy her lunch.
People that own drink shacks.
I know, I know a guy that can make that happen.
With things that are already perfection.
Why would you?
Such as a Mountain Dew, why would you mess with a Mountain Dew?
You know what you need to do to Mountain Dew? Add more sugar.
And probably more caffeine.
Right. I'll have to tell you stories.
Okay, all right, I think that's the end of our meeting and appreciate everybody coming and we'll see you next time.